Alright, we're ready to start. It's a little after six. I have in front of me some talking though, so forgive me if I glance down once in a while and try to focus with my eyes. They're about 68 years old and not what they used to be. But, let's start off. My name is Tom Winter and thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's warm outside, but again, this is Gordon. This is the kickoff for the review of the current Parsons Field Comprehensive Plan. The team's been working on this for quite some time and we're ready to roll it out and this is the first time the public will see it. The slideshow should take about one hour. We'd like to hold all questions and comments to the end of that. And we'd like to kind of keep the comments and questions sections down to an hour. You'll see there'll be alternative ways to reach us, email, other ways. So if you hopefully read the plain ones, it's released fully on the Town website. Follow up questions and so on, we will get back to you that, we promise. So without any further ado, first thing, I'd just like to point out this great picture from the top of 160 just before you head into these Parsons Field. This photo was taken by Reagan Young. A little bit more on her on the next slide. Please. The current team members, I won't read them all, but I'm sure you recognize Lady A. James. One of the new ones you may not recognize is Reagan Young. She's the Special Projects and Communications Manager for SMPV.
Thank you, Terry.
And the Town contacted her and commissioned to utilize her experience, knowledge, and access to a huge amount of resources and other topics. It's an understatement to say this would not be as far along as it wasn't for her contribution. It's amazing. And when you look at the plan, the full plan, I think you'll get a real good feel for what she's accomplished towards. Next please. So what's a comprehensive plan? Well, that's exactly, it's comprehensive. I won't read the whole thing, but it's goals, objectives, principles, guidelines, policies, standards, instantly, so on. Immediate and long range protection enhancement growth of development of the town. Basically, it's a plan of where we'd like to see the town go, how we'd like to see the town fathers direct it. Where we'd like to see differences in maybe some other infrastructure development. And we'll get into some detail on that later. It should reflect how we'd like to see our Parsons Field managed. It becomes the guidance for the Select Board and other governing bodies and yet to create and manage opportunities. It cannot contradict state, county, or federal law or regulation. Also, it's key to note, this does not establish new or change existing ordinances in the town. This is the plan and the other components of our town government should work from that to try to introduce new ordinances and so on. The state requires that all towns have a comprehensive plan and it be updated and viewed at least every 10 years. Our plan is not current. It's not the one with current future town ordinances. Any ordinance that's not, that doesn't have a basis in the plan will be of no legal standing. And that they'll be challenged in court and probably deemed unenforceable. Actually, very, very likely it would be deemed unenforceable. So this is a cornerstone to make sure that any new ordinances we pass are actually enforceable. Next please. The overall plan consists of two parts. There's an inventory. It's basically the sum total of all the data and knowledge to describe our conditions. And then the implementation. So it includes the recommendations. And this you'll see a lot of, GPS, not the thing on your cellphone that tells you where to go. I have a wife that tells me where to go, so I don't need that. But anyway, it's goals, policies, and strategies. It describes the steps and responsible parties, and that's a key thing. It's not just what to do, but we also identify the responsibilities, the responsible parties, excuse me, to work towards the desired future. And another part of this is future land use. And it's considerations for future zoning districts and land uses. Progress to date, way back, way back in 2019, we completed a community survey with 168 questions. It was presented to the Town on, obviously you can see, August 24th. That was when we had our first attempt at completing and updating our comprehensive plan. It was led by Cliff Prodig. Unfortunately, a little thing called COVID came along and just blew it all out of the water. So we've obviously reorganized it, kicked it off again. And so now we have what's called the Total Comprehensive Plan Inventory Draft. It has a total of nine goals, 32 policies, and 136 strategies. So this is not trivial in any way, shape, or form. This deep dives into virtually every aspect of managing our town and helping our town managers plan. It also gives the people of the town a vision of what we're going to grow to, at least we hope to grow to. Back in that survey, we sent out 1,600 surveys. We only received 6.7 back, 107. So unfortunately, that deems the data not statistically valid. Not enough people responded to say, everybody wants this. Of course, there were some things that were 100% everyone was against. But when it got into some of the gray areas, you can't really count on the survey. The next steps is revise the plan based on the community feedback. We hope to have a public hearing on August 6th. We hope to vote to accept the plan at the Town meeting on September 7th. And then a little, one little line at the bottom, just those three little words, execute the implementation plan. That's a big task and it should not be underestimated. Next please. I don't read all of this, but here's the contents of the plan. Obviously, the titles, this is the chapter, and the pages for each. And again, you see there's 12 things. We'll touch on each of these, not in great detail. We'll show that in the next, next slide please. So we'll start off, population and historic development findings. In 2020, the census showed to me 1,791 residents. We're supposed to grow by 270 people in the next 15 to 20 years. That's about 20%. That's pretty good. The working, it's interesting, our working population between 25 and 54 is slightly larger in Parsons Field versus York County. And we also have a larger portion of residents between 16 and 64 versus the rest of the county. Probably no surprise to everybody because once you move out here, why would you want to leave? That's my personal opinion. Parsons Field is one or two communities in York that has 51% or more of the population in terms of the mode of monitoring. Again, that's due to our location. It's tough to get businesses to come out here because the population centers are closer to Portland and so on. So our rural character, which we love, is also, I wouldn't want to call it a barrier, but it is a limit to the potential income that can be earned here. Also, based on the census, about 84% of the homes are owner occupied, 16.5% renter occupied, 85% single, single family, 3.5% duplex, 5.3% multi, and about 7% trail. This is also interesting. One of the Parsons Field, one of the few Maryland counties that sees an increasing population in the summertime. Why? Well, when you see some of the maps, man, we've got recreation opportunities out here. We have wonderful green areas here in Alaranas with the living plantation. We have wonderful lakes and ponds, streams. It's a wonderful place to come out here and spend the summer. Winters aren't that bad either, honestly. Next please. That Chapter 1 was really just information, so that did not have any goals or anything. That was just information. But Chapter 2, the residential development actions, now we're kicking off the real discussion. So you'll see, there's a goal, a policy, and here's a strategy. What we've done, as you can see down here, there's actually 14 individual strategies. We don't have time to go through every single one. So we tried to pull out one or two of the ones that we felt were perhaps more important. I shouldn't say more important, but that were perhaps more critical, maybe more controversial. But we're trying to just highlight a few things that when we read the whole plan, we may want to look at, but there's much more. So we want to retain our rural cluster village character. We want to provide housing alternatives and accommodate open space to plan growth. And we want to consistent with the historical development and the natural resources. So Policy 1, pretty obvious, encourage residential development. It prioritizes these things. What we suggest is create a cluster residential development ordinance to support development, pattern, and keeping with the town's historic development and trends to conserve open space. Again, that's really the only way you can do something like that. Policy 2, encourage development and access to affordable decent housing opportunities. Yep, that makes perfect sense. We also want to implement LD 2003, as approved by the Town voters. That's required by the state. I won't go into the details of that, but you know, it basically allows that if your lot, if your property can maintain and support another building, another home, it has to be a lot. It does not mean that they can violate any ordinances, any setbacks, or anything like that. But you know, a lot of this is brought on by the terrible economy of the years where you know, more and more children are having to live with their parents, grandparents. So this was an opportunity to, you know, be able to help break up that a little bit so that people can live at home and live independent of the rest of the family. Policy 3, curiously viewed as only its own code regulations. And as well as, and this is a key thing, you'll see that highlighted several times, and the staff capacity to enforce both. Again, this is a lot of work. To mention, there's 14 other strategies that go along with this, under this. Under local economy, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but you know, I think to no one's surprise, if you look here for agriculture, fishing and so on, Parsons Field, 11.5% of our population is rural to that versus the rest of York County and Maine. And over here, yeah, you know, we're a little bit higher than those, but very, very obviously. This is where a lot of, a lot of the income comes from for our residents. Down here, you'll see we're just the opposite. And we're below York County and the rest of Maine for a lot of these things. And again, that kind of makes sense because of our rural location. A lot of folks in this business don't want to commute an hour and 20 minutes to Portland or other places. So this smashes up with what you kind of expect and again, the numbers clearly show us what's, what we like and what we do out there. Next please. So local economy findings. There's other things we could put in here, but I just pulled out a couple of things. One is we don't have provisions for livestock zoning ordinance. We also currently don't have ordinance regulations to address wind and solar farms. We have many, many other things as well. One of the things I found out is, correct me if I'm wrong, I know there's texters here. There's nothing to keep someone from putting a, you know, a household on our waterways and live there, and live there. Nothing we can do about it because it's one of our ordinance, it's not banned by the state. But you say that may never happen? Hmm? Yeah, just might. And there's many, many other things as well that. There's nothing to keep out, you know, a 400 acre RV park. You know, I guess that would be nice to have the summer people come in and spend that, but do you really want to have all of that, all of that added traffic? Doubtly, a lot of the folks would be using the trail system here, the water. But again, is that something that really we want to see in our, our town? So the actions, experience moderate diversified economic growth in centralized locations. We want to encourage the forestry and agricultural products industry. We want to encourage appropriate diversified commercial development in Keizer Falls and other designated districts. And similarly, evaluate the resource and public infrastructure and the needs of that to oppose large developments. Again, this is economic development. We're not talking housing development here. We want to adopt formal standards for commercial and industrial development to mitigate impacts to the infrastructure. Next please. Policy 4, we want to assess the infrastructure needs and make improvements which encourage appropriate growth. So we're proposing, and you'll see this quite a bit, conduct a downtown master plan to make recommendations for aesthetic infrastructure, so on, for Keizer Falls. And area to promote future economic development. One of the things you'll see through here is we mentioned a lot, we should develop a plan. We should have a five-year or a 10-year horizon on some plans. In order to properly manage all the resources, in order to anticipate where we have to go get resources, line ourselves up with what we'll call a non-Town funding. We need to have that planned so we know two years ahead down the road, we should start applying for state grants, federal grants, other grants. You can't wait until all of a sudden, gee, you know, we, we have to put in an extra million and a half dollars for some reason because you know, something's worn out, fell apart, something like that. So very important, as you'll see all through this, we recommend a lot of detailed planning with five to 10-year horizon. There's 16 individual strategies that just go under all of this as well. So a ton more of information, next please. Transportation findings. I always, I'm a little, I always like to show roads. Roads always seem to be a very big topic in Parsons Field. I like this map because it shows our road system is quite well distributed. State is where, that's where the state takes care of things, the dark lines are where those are local roads and we take care of it. Over here, you can see, we have, our town is 64 square miles. That's 101 miles of roads. That's huge by any standard in the state. Town's responsible, partly responsible for 80 miles, or 50 miles of that paved. And remember, we have 1,800 residents here. State is provided for Maplewood Road, Multon Road, Merrill Road, North Road, and Els Street. And that's about 20 miles altogether. The state-owned highways is 2.8 miles. That's, I think we all know where that is. Next please. So as I do it to a couple of times, our rural location limits, public transportation opportunities, as well as other things. We're probably never going to get bus service out here, not for a long time. You know, trains, etc., forget it, not going to happen. But you know, we can optimize what we do have. It's wonderful to note that our road work is relatively safe. We, if you look at all the towns and that information's in the full comp plan, we're actually quite safe. Interestingly, the town right next door to us is way high. So I think everyone in Limerick drives way too fast. Well, am I a personal opinion? Parsons Field has eight bridges, by their own, maintained by the municipality, and three by the state. All of our bridges have a functional safety requirement that's satisfactory above. That's fantastic. Kudos to our management, our county select board, and our management team there to keep bridges up. Because everything is expensive, but bridges, when those have a problem, those go out, everything stops. So that, I think, is very strategic and very good. We should be very proud of that, that our bridges are not falling apart. So transportation actions. Have a well-defined and safe transportation system. And again, obviously meet the functional and steady needs and cause the efficient manner. First policy, maximize the efficiency of the state, excuse me, state or state-owned highway. Continue to work with the Transportation Department to address safety issues, maintenance, and development concerns. Next please. Address safety, maintenance, and development concerns related to the town roads. We should develop, continue to update, and prioritize, oh, there it is, a 10-year improvement, maintenance, and repair plan for the transportation network. Excuse me, again, the benefit of this is everyone will know what's going to happen. You'll have an idea when, and we can start planning for, you know, how are we going to get the resources to accomplish this thing? And that's pretty straightforward right there. We want to manage land use in a way that maximizes the efficiency of the transportation system and the benefit protection of all natural resources. Yep, pretty, you know, pretty straightforward. Maintain an act of met ordinances and standards for subdivisions and for public equator roads to encourage transportation and efficient growth. That means discouraging dead ends and cul-de-sacs. And we'll provide sidewalks in village areas. That's something that's, you know, been brought up many, many times, but you've got to get it into a longer plan if you want to plan the budget for something like that. That will go hand in hand with some of the other development activities that we anticipate. We want to meet the diverse transportation by promoting safe options for users, bicycles, pedestrians, motor vehicles. You know, I think so quite a few people like to take a walk out here in the country roads. Yeah, unfortunately, just, you know, cars can fall out of the way, but you know, sometimes the sides of the roads aren't, aren't quite the place where you want to drive your bicycle off into. I know I've taken a dump or two, and I used to ride a lot, my wife is also as well, when I had to get off. A logging truck will always win, remember that. There's 17 individual strategies altogether, so there's a lot in here to unpack for the rest of the strategies. Next please. This, this just is amazing. You know, one of the reasons we have such a beautiful rural area and so green is almost 16,000 acres of, approximately 40,000 acres of land are in main tree growth. That's 39%. That's a huge amount compared to any other county in the state. We are way ahead of everybody on that, and I think that accounts for one of the reasons why, you know, logging and the industry is still doing very well in New York. Approximately 9,500 acres, 25%, is in conservation. Again, that's a very, very good sized number. Maybe not the biggest, but it's right up there. So there's 8,000 acres conserved in the living plantation, right out the front window. Approximately 140 acres are held in the easement with a hyper palmaway farm in this easement. It's managed and owned by the Fred's of Small Heritage. And this is wonderful news. On February 24th, Northeast Wilderness Trust created the Great Oaks Wilderness Estate, St. Mark. 553 acres of resilient and mature forest, protected now as well forever. This gift to the town is managed also by the Fred's of Small Heritage Trust. So obviously, other, other resources are realizing land is a lot to preserve out here and things are happening to try to keep that. Natural resource actions. Again, probably pretty straightforward, but conserve, protect, and/or preserve the natural resources, including forest, agriculture, groundwater, wildlife, scenic views, and the historic resources, including buildings, cemeteries, stone walls, foundations, and sites in order to preserve the character of the town. Next please. Policy 1, use the regulatory powers to limit and control development in environmentally sensitive areas. Again, not limited to. Again, not limited, I won't read it all, but wetlands, floodplains, aquifers, underwater, so on and so forth. Stay away from steep slopes, other areas that poor soil or inadequate drainage and, you know, other critical habitat for wildlife. We recommend establishing a conservation commission and applying that responsibilities. Then, one of the other key things I'll point out here, we say establish a committee and this and that. That means we need town people to participate. The folks, the resources we have here cannot do this. They cannot do it on their own. More, more of the town needs to engage in all of these things if we want to keep things the way they are and manage to change properly going forward. So, we want to engage in, support the conservation of the land. Again, I won't read all that, I basically just said the same thing up there. Want to encourage thorough regulatory powers or incentives. Uh, preserve the existing and intentionally provide productive forest lands and nature. So, basically, yeah, we need to protect it a little bit more. We really don't want our forest land and open spaces to turn into uh... Large developments, at least I don't believe so. Everyone will have a chance to weigh in on that. As I just basically said, we want to limit non-residential, uh, limit non-residential development in most roads. Protect the resource and so on. Again, I don't have to read all that, but pretty straightforward. We want to try to keep businesses away from the residential areas and concentrate in a couple of areas. There's eighteen individual strategies under natural resource actions. And again, that's a lot of things, but there's a lot to unpack if we want to maintain our natural resources and the beauty that we all enjoy there. Next please. So, arts and recreation. Um, I have learned a lot learning about this. There's more things available locally than I ever thought of. It's, I'm sure my own fault, I do read the Weekly Shavers Guide, but I have missed a lot of things, obviously. So, again, I think you can, you know, not gonna read all of these, but you can see we have all kinds of things, parson. We have pickleball here, a coffee fellowship that goes on here, utilizing this wonderful administrative building, music festivals, fairs, and this is the adult education. So, you know, we have a Sauk Valley Adult and Community Education Center. That's, they're a member of the NEA, MAEA. So, there are a lot of different things to do. We could always add more, but again, people need to participate. Next please. So, a really simple goal, accommodate the recreations of all prisons, all ages. Create a system from our more town-owned and manage the recreation programs and facilities. So, again, we want to establish a recreation committee to manage the facilities, determine what additional facilities or opportunities would be viable, and make recommendations, and reports to the select board. We want to prioritize those facilities and gear towards older adults and retired population because it's moving that way for our area. And want to encourage local organizations, schools, nonprofits, also provide opportunities. So, we want to collaborate and participate in the five-town regional Sauk Valley Recreation Council. It's, there's opportunities, there's opportunities out there if we collaborate with some of these other organizations and so on to, you know, learn from what they do, capitalize on the synergy. Maybe we agree to work with Porter and other towns on, on certain things, and we can centrally locate something that many of these, many towns would have, uh... Would have access to. So, that way, not one town foots all the bill for something. We can place it in areas that are accessible for older adults, places that we want the kids to go wild and crazy. We can create something like that. But that's the idea behind working with all of these regional, the regional town council. We want to protect and promote public asset, access to public lands and water bodies. Pretty straightforward. And there's twelve individual strategies identified for, for this. Next please. Only sixty-eight more slides to go, don't worry. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Historic, historic resource findings. Hopefully, I, correct me, I had a few errors, I found, people found for me a little early. But again, I won't read all of this, I think many people are probably aware of these, but there's things in here I wasn't aware of either. Everyone knows the old townhouse. I didn't realize Keyser Falls circulating libraries on the national historic landmarks. Never realized that. So, I learned a lot going through this process, and I think when you read the whole comprehensive plan, you'll also learn a lot about our, our town as well. Our goal is to serve, protect, preserve the natural resources, again, including agricultural ground, wild, and all of the things that we love out here. Cemetery, stone walls, foundations, and sites in order to preserve the character of the town of Parsons. That doesn't mean that you're, we're gonna prohibit everyone who can't go on the site because you found an old foundation. There's probably so many old foundations around here. I have my property, we have four foundations, three of them still have the old dug well in the middle of the woods. They're so overground. I was walking, the wife and I are taking a hike just through the woods, almost fell into them. Uh, so, they're out there. So, excuse me. So, policy one, appropriately maintain and manage any town-owned historic properties and buildings. Next please. We want to protect our community's historic architectural and archaeological resources through regulatory powers, town funds, and other means. We need to update the nineteen ninety assessment of historic sites to determine whether there's a village cluster which may be suitable for local historic district zone. And that will provide protection to existing building standards of the future development. We recommend updating the land ordinances to require a subdivision and non-residential developers to take appropriate measures to protect the known store and prehistoric sites and resources, but not limited to modification and so on and so forth. But we want to make sure responsible, everyone is responsible to manage these and make sure we don't destroy them. We want to increase the public awareness of Parsons Field and its history and celebrate it. Work with the historical society to develop a signage program, provide some plaques displayed and identify historic sites, buildings, prehistoric sites. It could be asking a landlord, hey, would you mind if we allow people just to walk up to, take a look at this wonderful old site you have here? There's ten individual strategies. It's, I don't think anybody knows it other than perhaps Norm Cousin and myself, who's, rest in peace, the rest of his. But there's an old kiln back in the, back in the, back corner of our property, right on the boundary that used to be Mr. Cousin's property. It was built probably in the eighteen fifties. When we moved out here, it was still hot after almost a hundred years, over a hundred years. I went out there one time this spring, and I could see steam coming out of this, this mound. It was a kiln. I'm sorry to say, that's been destroyed now because of some activities that have been a global business. But anyway, there's, there's a lot of things out there that may be worth trying to preserve. Next please. I think everyone should know this, the town owns the Fred Ronald Municipal Building. That's where we are, and the old townhouse on our good old road. Can't miss it. If you're looking at it, you may go right off the road and into the corner, so be careful if you're looking for it. And this, again, I'd like to just put up there just so everyone's aware. The Sauk Valley Rescue Unit is a four-town rescue unit located in Hired, South Hired. In two thousand nineteen, they took six hundred and thirty-seven falls, a hundred and forty-nine of them were in Parsons. So, for goals, the goal of course is to provide community facilities and services which meet the needs of the residents, encourage public services and utilities in a way that's consistent with conservation of our natural resources and historic development. First policy, provide affordable municipal facilities which are conveniently located in the public, well-maintained, and have a suitable working environment for residents, boards, committees. Again, we should create a municipal building report, which indicates all the current town-owned properties, buildings, facilities, the parties responsible for their maintenance, and the funds available for that maintenance, and any needs for the next five years. So, again, create a plan that not only highlights what we have, but also what are we gonna need for the next five years. Next please. Policy two, provide in the official manner municipal services that reflect the need and desires of the community. Support the provision of retail services which are not, not effective to promote the town level. Basically, if we can't do it, let's find another resource that can, state, county. Maybe collaborate again with other, with other towns. Ah, look at this. Host the annual meeting of the five-town district, including elected officials, committees, other staff, to discuss challenges and so on, share resources, updates, identify collaboration, and foster a better understanding of those who need it. More things can get done more efficiently and effectively if all the towns are working together rather than five towns creating five copies of the same thing. It may not be necessary, it's a waste of resources and money. Ensure the provision of water and sewer utilities in keeping with the needs of the community, either through public or private operators or town-owned systems. Assist in the provisional solid waste management programs. I know we have a very active team here that promotes our solid waste activity, but again, it's one of the policy. I should also point out that just because we say something like this, it doesn't mean that we're not doing anything. You know, we are, we are already involved in several of these things. We may have identified a little more detail around it, but don't anyone think for a second that this is all brand new, nobody's ever heard it, that's not true. Our town fathers have tried very hard to manage the town in the way that we all want. And there's nineteen individual strategies identified, so write a lot in there. Next please. And this is really kind of interesting as well. For the only community in the Indian region, the total land evaluation is higher than the total building evaluation. That's kind of, that's amazing. Our, our land is worth more than all of the houses put together. Most interesting. This is a shocker. Over the last ten years, an adjusted for inflation, administration expenses have decreased by twenty-seven percent. That means we're trying to, these folks are trying to do more with less. Twenty-seven percent of the adjusted decrease. I think it'd be hard pressed to find any other town in, in the state of Maine and probably surrounding states that would have something like that. When adjusted for inflation over the last ten years, our property taxes have seen the smallest increase over all other types of resident, only increasing three percent. What that means is property taxes have gone up, but we've also seen a larger increase in state aid, county aid, other, other resources. And again, that's kudos to our town government that's trying to constantly find alternative resources. They work very hard to minimize, you know, the tax revenue increases. And I think they've done a pretty darn good job. So, for fiscal analysis actions, address the needs of the community in officially sound, responsive manner. Very obvious. Seek the alternative income sources to offset the lands and properties. So, one of the things that's in there, and there's many others, but explore the feasibility of a development impact fee which requires developers to contribute funds proportionally to the increased demand for services resulting from the new development. Someone builds a house with fifteen, fifteen homes on it? Well, we have to absorb, you know, all the extra waste picking up, all the, you know, increase the traffic on the roads, road maintenance, you know, many other things. Well, the developer, you know, he or she should have put a lot of that to, to jumpstart that whole process. It's not fair to the residents that we, that we shorted that responsibility. Next please. Maintain a reasonable tax rate which is consistent with contained services and is responsive increases. Ah, here's that word again. Plan, develop a ten-year CIP capital improvement plan which outlines year-to-year allocations, savings, and reserve accounts for specific purposes. Document reserve accounts which are active, and use that CIP to develop an annual capital budget in order on annual, at the town meeting. And again, this, the more information the voters have about what's coming in the future, I think we can all make, hopefully, you know, better decisions, be able to manage our potential capital that comes in much, much better. This may upset some folks because this can be, this can be a little controversial. But conduct an updated townwide assessment to show the evaluations reflect current property values. Once updated, establish a revolving evaluation to begin to, excuse me, to begin two to three after, two to three years after the update to avoid the large cost and burden of a ten-year town update. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the assessment costs approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Well, it'll be ten years or so, ping, that pops up. Our town fathers have already started that, they already, they realize this is coming, and so they have started a small fund to start building the resources, so this doesn't got any key programs in the budget. That's called planning. Practice transparency and productive collaboration in the annual budget process. There are ten other individual strategies that go along with these, fiscal analysis. Next please. Existing land use. New residential, commercial, recreational types have become more common since the last major ordinance update. Again, one of the things I, I mentioned was uh... Water holes, you know, those are a lot of, other things have come up that, you know, who would ever imagine? You know, do you want windmills, wind generation, a development allowed here? You know, what is it, what is it we want to, what do we need to do to ensure we don't ruin the aesthetic quality of our town? We want to ensure that development is not spread out over a large area in a regular way. This is also known as urban sprawl. It's much more difficult to not only just preserve the natural resources, but also it makes it much more expensive for the town to provide services. If there's a house, it'll be two hundred yards all over the place. It's, it can be done, but guess what? It's gonna cost a lot more money. So, this makes a lot of sense to me. So, the goal, develop and enforce regulatory measures in keeping with the main statutes. And again, we'll see, natural resources, that's probably in every single slot. Protect our natural resources by adequate development standards and guide development in keeping with this plan. First policy, analyze the municipal needs and development trends on a periodic basis. Review the municipal data and the comprehensive plan annually and update the sections as needed. In order to make smart decisions, you have to have current data. We all know, we live in a data-based world, data is what you need, make smart, informed decisions. Next please. Devise zoning warrants as needed to be consistent with the adopted, adopted comprehensive plan. Evaluate the zoning warrants for working uses which are not covered. Big job. Adjust regulations as needed to ensure the growth is consistent with our ability to provide our services and infrastructure. Direct growth, we're, we're developing the neighborhoods already exist to avoid sprawling development. Again, it's that urban sprawl and negative impacts associated with infrastructure and the environment. Consider implementing a differential growth cap which allow, to allow more development in denser neighborhood areas and villages and less erosion. Again, try to move the development into areas where it's already begun. We want to protect our natural resources in critical natural areas through buffer zones, currently defined as shore land zoning warrants as well as other zoning tools. Consider the feasibility of a mandatory open space zoning, also known as conservation subdivisions. For rural areas where any subdivision is required to contain a large share of land, often sixty to eighty percent open space outside the lots of their developers. That does, was a long way to also preserving the rural character that it had. There are 14 other individual strategies that go along with existing land use. Next please. This map I put up here identifies, as you all agree, identify the growth, rural, and traditional areas. We are so blessed, oops, sorry about that. We're so blessed to have this wonderful natural area, recreational area, right smack in the middle of our, our town. Eh, okay, you're looking after people, they should have a good one. That's, they're not really from away, I guess. But you can see also where growth areas are identified. And again, all the rural areas. And these are areas, the pink, and that's kind of an important thing, where the vision transitioning to growth. We're proposing that right along here, along Route 160, that'll be transitioning that so, to allow more growth. And also around the Province Lake. Province Lake has, there's a lot of course, that, there's the lake there. There's a restaurant, both of course. There's a gentleman out there, he was trying to get a grocery store going. The folks out here sometimes don't, can't share all the services we have. Sometimes it takes immigrants longer to get there. But if there's more financial, more financial resources coming into the town from, in this area, it's easier to justify putting a substation out there. So responses can be 20 minutes and 30 minutes instead of 45 minutes or longer in bad cases. So that's one of the reasons we, we put this on here. And I'll be frank with you, I'm gonna wanna plan to push that a little bit. Because I also have another theory on that. I think that also may attract very larger homes and more expensive homes. And honestly, I'd rather have two, one or two million dollar homes built than five or six $350,000 homes. Again, it's easier, it's less impact on our infrastructure. Yet we still get the taxes because the homes will be, will hopefully high-value. Next please. So we want to include a provision in the zoning warrants which requires developments of a certain size to include electric charging stations or the infrastructure to install within the future. What's the future of EVs? You can argue about that. We've come on strong. And I think next time, cost of gasoline jumps 20 or 30, 40%, EVs may be a little bit more, more cost-effective. We want to expand public infrastructure if necessary to support future growth in the Kesar Falls area. Invest in water and sewer. Public amenities such as sidewalks, crosswalks, lighting, and public parking. We want to draw smaller businesses and build up that community. We have to have these things. You can't build a business and just put in a set system. Not, not in the rural area. We only have one small parking lot. That's where the post office is. I think that can hold like 25 vehicles or something like that. Much less in the wear time because you can't push the snowball. So these are things that we want to say, yeah, we should have business. We have to seriously look at the public infrastructure that's necessary to support it. And to just mention, there's two rural, ah, I have a hard time with that word. Two rural areas have been identified which may be transitioned to growth area in the future. The section of North Road right down here, and all the way buttoning up to Seminary, and the area to adjacent Province Lake. Just so long, I don't want people thinking, I'm also, I'm, because I'm on the committee, I don't want anyone to build next to me. I live right here. I live two houses down in the woods. So yes, I'm throwing my rural, my rural area into, into the North Road because it's the best thing for the town, we feel. It's the majority rules. I would love to have no one else build around here. It's called the drawbridge effect. Once I move here, no one else should be able to move out here. It's an old concept, but it's just not practical if you want to have growth and manage it properly and also ensure that we have, protect our resources. Next please. And guess what? This is the next to the last slide. Implementation of the voter recruitment plan. This, this one slide is, really encompasses a lot. So, just, you know, the major responsible, responsible parties, the select board, planning board, you know that. They're the usual folks. We recommend the conservation commission and recreation committee to manage the town-owned facilities and open space. As I said earlier, we want to coordinate with the SBRC to achieve the best overall results. And we've mentioned probably seven or eight times, might as well make it nine or 10. We need to create detailed plans with five and 10-year horizons in order to manage the town budget, anticipate and secure outside funding, and manage our resource allocation. Also, and this is also key, you can't just do it with the folks we have, the current staff. And this is the volunteer folks on the, on the planning board and the council. The town must consider additional staffing, or at the minimum, additional resources for existing staff to increase their ability to dedicate time and take the recommended actions in the plan. Town recently has approved the last, the last meeting to buy some software. So, with the folks here, we can track road issues. You submit the information, it goes to the right person, you'll get a response back. It also keeps track of all of the, all the requests, the dates, and so on that came in. Something many people might think, well, you know, just an email and someone can create an Excel spreadsheet. That takes time. Somebody has to do that. And honestly, you just saw, we reduced our administration costs by 27% over here. So, they don't have the bandwidth to take on a lot of that stuff. So, implementation strategy. Establish a comprehensive plan implementation committee. See the committee with reps from the select board, planning board, budget committee, as well as some of the team on the comprehensive plan committee members. Will serve as a central body to monitor the plan progress, navigate challenges and information in implementation, and support accountability. One of the things, and, well, and the select board should, we recommend that the select board annually identify three to five strategies to focus on for each fiscal year and implement the community supports and monitor the profits. There's no way they, our town government could possibly implement all of this science tricks because it covers soup to nuts. Everything that goes into our town, everything that's gonna go into our future, and everything that's required to protect, we believe, to protect rural character and the wonderful life that we all enjoy out here. Comprehensive plan draft, which is I think, it's 136 pages altogether. That's, will be available on the, on the town website. And also the town survey I mentioned, that will be posted on there as well for those that like to see that. And I believe this is still current. I contacted town office to request hard copies of the documents at a durable cost. Next please. Ta-da! That's it? That's it? The, I just have to comment on the fireworks thing. I made hundreds of presentations over the years. I've always ended it with that. Even business presentations. So, forgive me, that's my own little thing I like. Just kind of wakes people up. What? So again, thank you all for your attention. Please review the plan. Remember, we're going to, you know, we will respond to requests for more information. And we'll, you know, have a public hearing coming up as well. So, we highly recommend that you read it. We hope you all support it and agree that, yep, this is, this is the right thing to do. And with that, I say again, thank you all for your attention and please, oh yes. Good night, everybody. I was gonna see if I could just heat it, but I, I know you know where I live. Yeah, well, it is, you press one, it's a flashlight. Then it goes in the square. It's technology. So, ah, sorry. Questions? Again, we like to, we know we haven't had a chance to review the plan, so, you know, some of the things may be answered when you read the whole, the whole plan. Because we don't just list goals, policies, strategies, and also the responsible parties. There's a reason why we do that, why we came up with these things. And all of that is explained in extreme detail, I'm sorry, not extreme detail, but excellent detail, in, in that very large document. It's planned education and very, very, very thought-provoking action. You won't fall asleep, it's amazing what you're learning.
Are there any recommendations from the committee on suggested ways of enforcing a plan or making sure the plan aligns up with the, the planning board's work?
That, that's the idea. Could you just go back to this slide? Just, oh, yep, just do the upper. That's, that's the idea here. This, this company, the implementation committee is responsible for holding the town fathers to the, the strategies. So, that's the other force.
Hey Cliff, there are a couple of strategies in there around requiring the planning board to update ordinances in certain areas. So there's probably seven or eight different strategies that reference either specific items that are absent or things that need to be updated. So, there's quite a bit in there about, there'll be a lot of work to do.
We've just redefined almost everybody's job description in the town. Except you. Anything else? Yes?
I've read it from the beginning to end. It's very good. The only thing I found that was lacking was when you described the parking in the town lot. It really, really, really needs to be defined. It would help the planning board with issues that will be coming up.
I mean, I think we do, that's quite specific. I think in the comp plan, we do say, you know, assess the downtown. And that included parking sidewalks, you know, so we actually do have that in, in the plan.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's, it's in there. We are recommending that we do that. Any, anything else? Yep?
How many members on the comp plan?
Go back to the beginning, make a...
Or we could just raise our hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Nine would be...
Okay, nine, nine, nine. All right, I'm just curious to see what 19 people has, that means 10 people aren't on the comp.
Yeah, we were, we were pretty happy with 10.
Sure, yeah.
We weren't sure if there'd be three or four, but three and a half times are expected.
Right.
That's great. Hopefully, there'll be more at the hearing after the town's had a chance to digest it and provide some feedback. Anything else? Well again, thank you all very much. I appreciate you not throwing anything at me. Have a very pleasant evening and we hope to see you all.